Working waterfront. Jessica, I understand cannot be here. Richard, would that be you, sir?
Yes, sir. Apparently, I am the stand-in for Jessica. She is under the weather. Just kind of as a preamble, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hutchinson with GMC, who is the lead on the design team. As you know, we have been in a process with one of the restored grants called the Working Waterfront and Green Space Restoration Project. And we went through a process that was generally described as a planning feasibility, which included stakeholder involvement and design concepts and kind of refining the scope of work. You have before you a document that has two parts to it. One is kind of a summary of notes from a planning team meeting that occurred back in December, as well as just so you have the background, the very, very broad and vague scope of work that was submitted to the Restore Council back at the original application. And the nice thing about that scope of work, it pretty much covers everything you could think of that you may want to do to a facility there on our waterfront. But ultimately, the objective that we are working toward, Mayor Sullivan asked to open up and receive comments, additional comments during the first month of her tenure, and took those and shared those. And what you see here is kind of the first draft of what we need to get to, which is an engineering design scope of work, meaning that we've got to tell our funders and we've got to tell our engineers, this is what are the components that we're going to design as part of this project. And that is one of the benchmarks that we have to get to. You know, back in the spring, we were close, but we had some issues to resolve and we needed to take some more input, and we have. And that has further been refined. But also, the most important part is, is that we need to have council's engagement on this so that there is an understanding, here are the components that are going to be designed as part of this project. And this is a pretty big list. And ultimately, we'll probably be coming back to you because as we look at budgets and we look at components and we look at priorities, we may have to refine it by either reducing it, or we may be able to, this rarely happens, come back to you and say, well, we have more money than we have elements. What else would you like to see included in this? But that's kind of the preamble, and that's where we are. And, you know, this is a written list, kind of broken down by areas and activities within our facility, our park there. And I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Hutchinson to come forward and kind of take it from there and kind of walk you through this and then seek some input, questions, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Thank you. Guys, Scott Hutchinson with Goob and Mills and Kaywood. Glad to be back here talking to you about this project again. It's been a while. And Richard kind of teed it up really well. The documents you see in front of you is, like Richard said, a summary of our meeting. And I'll hit the highlights and answer any questions that you have about that. What I'll do is just kind of share what, it's really a document that says that here's what we're going to do and not do, but it's really steered towards the difference in the original plan versus where we're wanting to head right now. So I'll just jump right into it. The first item or topic we'll talk about is shoreline. The previous plan had a sandy beach, rock jetties to hold a sandy beach in on the South Beach. And we're proposing now, based on the input, is to not do a sandy beach, but simply do either a new bulkhead-type material or even possibly a more of a living shoreline, which is grass beds, things like that, that aren't something that you would go sit at the beach and enjoy, it'd be more grass, things like that. But probably bulkhead material is what we're talking about. The pier landing, again, no different than the original. We're going to fix the damage that's done around the concrete area, around the pier landing. And on the bluff, on the South Beach part of the bluff, really not do anything that we have previously talked about, about modifying the bluff to provide the slopes up the bluff and bathrooms into the bluff and viewing areas, amphitheater, that kind of stuff. We're removing that from the equation. And as far as stairs go, on the north side of the South Beach, the stairs that are there, just replacing those with stairs, but better material and bring them up to code also. On the south side of South Beach, replace those stairs with actual ramp situation where we can make it ADA compliant. It'll be switchbacks, things like that, to get it from the top to the bottom in a way that meets ADA requirements. And what that looks like exactly, I couldn't tell you right now, but we'll just try to keep it as aesthetically pleasing as possible, obviously. And then on the bluff face itself, no improvements, retaining walls, anything like that, just simply taking out some invasive species and maybe just cleaning it up and hopefully get rid of some kudzu and plant some better material.
I was going to ask you that. And if you don't mind, Scott, I'd like for the council members to maybe jump in and give some comments as we go. If y'all can just, you know, kind of gently butt in. Absolutely. So Scott, question about removal of, you said invasive plants, and then you mentioned kudzu. Is there something, I know that that's an invasive plant, but is there something better than kudzu? Because those things have been pretty stable for a long time, as a lot of people have pointed out.
Well, if it's stable and there's kudzu on it, and it's not stable because of kudzu, I'll tell you that.
Okay.
Kudzu looks like it's, you know, covering everything, but if you get down below the leaves, you'll see that there's very little protection of the soil material. So it helps with rain impact, but water running on the bluff or anything like that, kudzu is not a erosion control material.
And there are native plants to give me use for that?
There's, yeah, there's quite a few things we could, I'll let Brandon, if he wants to jump in.
That answers the question. For the sake of this, it's good enough.
Some people think kudzu is good for stabilizing bluffs, but it's absolutely not.
Okay.
Any other question? Okay, I'll keep going then. We'll stay with the park area on South Beach. We will not have a restroom in the bluff like we originally proposed, but we will provide a restroom facility down there in an area. The lighting, just improve the lighting that's down there, more human scale, as you see on the note. Any drainage or utility work that's necessary, we'll address that in the plan. Of course, the new benches and things like that to make improvements to the area will be done too with landscape and hardscape.
Let me butt in right there too. Scott, and maybe Mayor, you might be able to help with this too. Over the past decade at least, there've been people that have wanted to put benches out in a memoranda, a memorial for someone that may have passed away. Is that an opportunity for those to go in and like what it says, put in benches?
I'm sure we can do a memorial there. I think some of those benches that are there mainly are already memorial benches, but we'll probably look at a different style bench.
Okay. I can think of several, and people, there was a lot, and there weren't enough locations. There were more requests than there were locations, and we didn't want to choose some people over another. So maybe it's an opportunity to memorialize some of these people.
We'll want to make sure that the benches that are currently there as memorials, that, you know, they're replaced, maybe not in the exact same spot, but they're replaced with some sort of bench that also memorializes somebody or looked at some other way to memorialize a particular glory of a bench. How much should we appropriate that? Back to the point.
Yep, okay, great.
On the landing itself, the semicircle area, the improvements there being better lighting and, of course, fix the damage that's in the area where concrete's undermined and any utility work that's necessary. Same with the benches and signage and things like that to improve that area and also the landscape as well. In the parking and the traffic circulation in that, at the pier landing, big change from the original, the last plan is that we're going to keep that circulation the same and keep some parking that's facing outwards towards the bay for people to view sunsets. And just like the last plan, our goal is to not lose any parking, but to keep the same parking capacity that's down there. And we could possibly remove some of the interior spots, but maybe replace them somewhere else, but overall, keep the, certainly keep the outside parking spots that are down there. Keep it pretty much the same, but just improved.
So Scott, this is something that we've heard a lot from the citizens on. So when we say some slight geometric adjustments, are we talking about maybe some centering there? You know, there was the view, when you come down the hill, that the Rose Garden, the fountain be centered on, maybe on the pier. Is that what we're talking about?
Not, no. That's, we removed that concept because that's, to do that alignment that was planned, that's a really big adjustment to where the circle is. And so it'll, our current plan is to leave it offset like it is now. The adjustments we would be doing would really geared towards making it pedestrian-friendly. Because right now, you come down from the top, you come down the bottom of the bluff, and you're, if you're walking, it's unclear where to go because you've got this big area of asphalt you've got to cross and cars coming in different directions. So those kind of improvements is really what we're talking about.
All right, great.
And, let's see. And down there too, some more signage and directional informational signs, things like that. The entrance to the park up at the top, we're planning on leaving that same plan on redoing that intersection where it's more of a T, where the roads meet, and just improve that situation there. That's, we're proposing to leave that in the plan. And on the Fireman Hall bluff steps, just replace those with just co-compliant stairs in that area. The South Mobile Street up at the top, we're not proposing to put any new parallel parking up there. That's gone. But the existing parking, the 90-degree parking that's there, just improve that, just improve the area, but no loss in parking or anything up there. The fountain and Rose Garden, the fountain itself, we're going to have to do a complete rebuild of that. It's just, Richard could probably tell you a lot about the costs and the problems associated with it in its current state. But replacing it as in something that's still size and scope is the same as what's there now, but just something that doesn't leak and something that works and something where we could put the mechanical guts of it in an area that's better protected and things like that. Possibly making it a little bit smaller, but as you can see here in the scope, we define that as no more than a 10% decrease in size of the fountain area. The Rose Gardens, same, pretty much same as it looks now. Leave the roses, leave the style and the formality of it, and just improve the green space a little bit in that area. More benches, receptacles, signage, things like that. On the pier itself, really, that's where I kind of anticipate steering a lot of the money that we would not, that we were going to spend on the bluff and that work, maybe steer that more towards the pier itself improvements. And there's so many things we can do down there. And when you live here long enough, you just kind of don't pay that much attention to what it really looks like. You're just used to seeing it every day. But if you go down there and really look closer, you can see there's a lot of improvements we could make to the pier itself, just aesthetically, with benches and lighting and new rails. I mean, there's so many different things we can do down there to improve it. The crab piers and envision the same, maybe a new gateway onto the pier that would really make it stand out. So that's kind of the overall change in scope. Obviously, the big items are no beach and no bluff work. And we'll just, Richard pointed, they're also attached here is the original scope for the grant. You can just see that this still falls within that broad scope.
Scott, I, on the municipal pier, I don't see any mention of a potential dockage, you know, for a ferry, and that was talked about at one time. I wish that we could put that in there. I mean, even if it's not utilized, at least plan for the addition of a ferry. I think there was one maybe penciled in on the north side of the pier at one time?
I think in the meeting, if I'm not mistaken, we discussed that briefly. Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong. And we talked about some improvements to the Marina area, but I think we decided that basically the scope of work, that that could not be included in this.
We could, you could do maybe a ferry pier, address that, but the Marina itself, no.
This wouldn't be at the Marina. This would be on the north side. And I might remind everyone that these are recommendations, not, these aren't adopted yet.
Yes, yes. Because the ferry pier concept, they kind of get sarcastically lit up in some of the articles that came out a while back. So, you know, I just, I don't know if we want to chase that or not.
I'll stand up and say I won't. I mean, I want it to be considered, council.
Yeah, we kicked it around for decades now, and it's.
Well, I think that Mobile may be getting closer to, you know, putting one in service, and it needs somewhere to go. And I think bringing tourists over here and dropping them off during the daytime and shopping them in, going back to Mobile is a good use of a ferry terminal, in my opinion.
Yeah, we will certainly.
Well, I want to hear from council too. I mean, that's, was my thoughts. It doesn't cost much, I don't think, to be able to anchor one there.
I don't know much about ferry docks. I mean, as far as, is it kind of a standard add-on of what a ferry dock looks like? I mean, it probably determine a little bit by the ferry, right?
Sure, sure will. But it's not a Carnival cruise ship. It's a, you know, maybe a 100-passenger ferry. And that pier is certainly no stranger to ferries. I mean, that's part of its legacy is the Mobile ferries.
Yeah, your limit's the water depth, really, what you could put there.
Yeah. I don't want to see the idea go away. I may be convinced later it's a bad idea, but I think it should be at least maybe on the visionary list.
Got you.
You okay with that?
Fair enough. Yeah. No time without being honest.
Well, what we would like to do, and I'll let Richard address this, is maybe work this into a, possibly a resolution or something like that to move forward. Do you want to talk about that, Richard?
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I think just as, you know, and we want to make sure we take time and get every, council's input, Mayor's input, everybody who wants to have input, but eventually, we've got to be able to tell our team what they're designing and not have any ambiguity about it or have, you know, six months later, have a, you know, we just got to have a, where are we going from here? And I think, you know, let the council president and Mayor work that out, how we, as Buford King would say, memorialize it so that we can have a clear path forward going, to get this project, you know, going in the direction we want it to.
Well, I heard three council, out of three, say that they thought it might be a good idea to consider that ferry terminal.
Okay. Well, definitely, your input is not only welcomed, it's encouraged, so.
And required.
Yes, and required. Hi, any other questions?
No.
Hi, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Brandon, appreciate that. Thanks, Richard. All right, discussion of proposed gas service fees. Terry?
Sir.
I know you can hardly wait to talk about this.
I apologize for being a little late. I've had a couple emergencies I had to go over, and then my city car wouldn't drain, so I do apologize. I did have some paperwork in my car. But anyway, yeah, just some ideas, you know, the water's always charged, the sewer, the electric, the gas is never charged, and I think that really needs to be done to get a little bit of our money back, maybe, you know, at least pay for the supplies. Right now, with just the supplies, it's about $280 per service just for the material. That's not counting the meter set. That's just the pipe, and that's for average 100-foot service. So we'd like to take it to $300 per service, and that is regardless of the appliances. Some companies do the services as far as limited-use appliances, which we would call pool heater, generator, summertime use. You start breaking that down, it gets really confusing and gets complicated, I just think, across the board. So far, just talking to people, nobody has a problem with the $300 service charge, especially when they do the gas piping, you know, it costs them $2,000 or $3,000 just to have their house piped. So they're not going to buck at having a $300 service ran for their appliances. We're averaging about 400 services a year since 2015. So, you know, that would help drastically. I do, we have talked in there about the, up to 250 foot at that price, anything over would be $2 a foot. I would like to see that down to a dollar, just to, you know, some people live 1,000 foot off of the street, and it's, gets kind of costly at that. The pipe costs us about a dollar a foot, about 90 cents, 80, 90 cents a foot. Reconnect fee, I do agree with the $100. But guys, you got to go on standby to go there. That's a two-hour call-out. It's just the 2850s, just not cutting it for what the charge is now. The, I think that's about it, really. I just really believe we need to charge for this service fee, something we've never done for a tap-in fee, at least to cover our expenses.
Council president, if I could add a few comments. I just wanted to let all of you know that I did speak with Jackson Thornton, Terry Mitchell from Jackson Thornton. I think council president and I have met with him and talked a little bit about, actually about rate studies versus service fees, but I did have him, consult him on this. And he did, he agreed with everything. He said that he thought this was a good start for us, very conservative, but he did mention that he would recommend on the meter deposits for rental properties, that we also add manufactured homes to that at $150. He also suggested, and I think council president and I had also talked about this briefly, that the reconnect disconnect fee should be at 75 and 100 for after-hours versus 50. And the reason, one reason we're looking at, again, doing that is because you would prefer people, instead of, you know, cutting on and cutting off or reconnecting, that you, that, you know, they just maintain their gas service for the whole year. And this way, hopefully, that will encourage them to do that. But again, I did have him look at it, and he felt like this was a good starting place for us.
You know, I'll just add to that. Mayor, piggyback one of your comments is that also, the $75, I don't even know that you can get anybody in any utility service, a private, to come out and show them do anything for $75. Service fees are typically much more than that, even if they're, even if they flip a switch, it's 75, it's 100 bucks, you know.
For the call-out fee.
Right. And that's a real cost too, because the employee has to stop what they're doing, they have to go to the location of the service, and there's miles on the vehicle, and there's a cost involved. It's a real cost.
And I did, I called quite a few people all the way up to Southeast Gas and tried to get their ideas of what they did and what they charged. There's one company that, you know, they don't charge anything, but they only run 50 services a year. Back when they were running, he said upwards of 200 at a max they was charging, but they got to the point where they wasn't. You've got some people that aspire, they run their own inside houses, so it's not a cost to them. So they'll do it at no cost, but everybody else is charging.
Terry, you said that you would like to see the line that's installed over 250 feet be lower than the proposed $2 per foot to $1 per foot, because you said the cost of the pipe is about 85, 80 to 90 cents. I know you, I heard the number, 80 to 90 cents a foot, but there's also a labor cost involved in that, isn't it?
Yeah, well, true that. Yes, sir, it is.
So I think that may be why, maybe why that was proposed to be $2 a foot.
And I guess what made me think about that, like, late Friday night, I went and looked at one, the guy's 2,000 feet off the road, but he's got like eight gas lights, two furnaces, you know, two water heaters just on his house, and he's got an outdoor kitchen, he's got another water heater. And without going to the breakdown, I think it would be a less cost to do that. Now, if we did go to the breakdown, you could probably get away with some of that. You know, if you don't have this appliance, it will cost you $2 a foot if you do it, does not. So I just kind of went in the middle.
Sounds like he's really struggling, Terry.
Well, you know.
Gas lights going down a 2,000-foot driveway to an outdoor kitchen? I don't know. I hope they're not watching, but I, it's hard for me to feel sorry for that person.
Well, and we opted not to do the step-down based on the number of appliances, just to keep things simple. There are a lot of utilities who do that. I mean, if we wanted to look at that 250 feet, if we wanted to say, if you have over three appliances or, you know, lighting or whatever, whatever you wanted to say that's connected to gas, then you, we could cut that fee in half. That's something certainly that's easy to do if we wanted to do that, because we know we're going to recoup those costs, you know, monthly in the rates. But, you know, that's certainly something we can look at. We were, we were trying to keep it simple.
Yeah, it's just a lot of variables there, and a lot of different, companies got a lot of different answers.
That's a tough call. Council? Comments?
I like the idea, considering, you know, if they do have a lot of lanterns and appliances that are going to be used, you know, to reduce that fee, you know, if it's over a certain footage. What's the reason for the rental property meter deposit being 150 versus 100?
It was suggested we do that because those are typically your higher risk. I guess people are people who are likely to, and I'm not sure why that's the case, but they say people, if you have rental property, those are the people who are likely to leave. But it's not the person necessarily that owns the property that's going to leave, it's going to be the rental folks. So to me, that did not make much sense.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's, yeah, the way it was explained to me.
To me, that's just something else to track. I mean, just keep it simple.
And we could keep it simple and just do the $100. This is all absolutely for discussion.
I agree, because most of your damages, your, far as the deposit cost, very, very few damages we do have, and what we do have is either a landscaper or a lawnmower backs into it. It's never caused by the person that has the meter. It's usually the outside person, and we will send them a bill for that, but.
Other than that, I think it's a great idea to charge for the service, by the way. Past due.
Yes, I agree.
Just so we can move it, I would agree with the reconnect disconnect fee that the mayor mentioned being $75 or $100 after hours. And I don't really have a preference. Councilman Brown on that meter deposit, really, I mean, you know, we can always, better we have to be a big problem, we could change it. I don't know that, I think that one more category is that more complex, but I wouldn't argue with you over though, just to get it through. Do y'all have an opinion on the dollar versus $2? I mean, you're talking about complicating it. If you start bringing into the equation how many appliances they have on it, that's.
That's complicated.
That's complicated.
It gets, it does get real complicated.
But you got to figure out the number of services that you do that are over that 250 foot is probably not that many either. So you're talking, you know, a handful a year that are going to fall into that category, and you take it into consideration.
That's great.
Well, I don't know. If they're running one little, you know, one hot water heater and it's, and you had to add 1,750 feet of line in that case.
You charge them $2 a foot. But if they got five gas lanterns and two continuous water heaters and a range and pool heater and everything else going, then.
I don't disagree with you, Robert. I don't disagree with you, Robert, I just was trying to keep it, to your point, trying to keep it simple.
Trying to keep it the same.
What, what language do you put in there on the, how much you charge per foot?
I just, I, personally, I think even a dollar a foot, you're not going to have that many that's over that 250.
Why don't you make it a dollar a foot compromise, dollar a foot, and then there's no...
Yeah.
To Terry's point, I think that's an easy, simple compromise, dollar a foot over 250, and doesn't matter if you have one appliance or 12.
Yeah, because that's over your $300 service charge.
Right. Does that sound good? Okay. You making notes, Lisa?
Trying to.
Okay. So, what I heard then was the dollar a foot, and then on the meter deposit?
Just 100.
The 100. Any, anybody, is everybody okay? Mayor, you okay with that?
Yeah, and that would be on rental properties, manufactured homes, or just whatever, just residential would be 100.
Right. And then on the, I, I proposed to, to take the mayor's recommendation on the reconnect disconnect fee of 75 and 100, as opposed to what's on here, 50 and 100. Kimmy?
That's fine.
I think that's it.
Okay.
I think, anything else? Counsel? I do appreciate it. I mean, we don't like doing this. This is, this is like the worst part of the job, it really is. But, at the same time, we, we have to run our utilities like a business, so I appreciate that y'all are running like a business.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
I appreciate what you do.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Terry.
Council President, can we just clarify on the, the, is it, did you say the first, anything over 250?
Yeah, anything over 250, $1 a foot.
Not 350, okay, not 350. She thought you said 350.
No, no, I'm sorry. Anything over 250.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sure rubber bands behind your ears that mess you up. All right, committee updates. These ought to be short tonight.
No updates.
Congressman Congress?
No update.
Councilman Brown?
No update.
Okay. I would say, I believe that Joe McInerney from the Airport Authority has been reaching out to council members, and, and all I ask from the council is to, you know, a lot of times I have to wear my Airport Authority hat, and a lot of times I have to wear my city council hat. But, and, and they're asking us to potentially guarantee a loan for the proposed hangars out there. And my wish for the council is to only support that if it's financially viable, and by that, that they don't lose money, hold the Airport Authority to that, is what I ask. That's my city, city hat on there. With that, and we have a, we have a meeting next Tuesday with the Airport Authority. Maybe we'll find out some more information then. Department head updates. RJ, since you're right up front?
Yeah, just one, one quickie, because it's been a continuing thing. Our testing company is going to be back at the Clock Corner tomorrow, around about 10:00 a.m. to take the one additional sample. It's going to come out of the, the grass field that's there now, so hopefully, they'll just be in and out, and you may not even notice it. And then we'll cross our fingers and hope that the lab results are in our favor and we can get that checked off the box.
Do they know how far, how far down are they going this time, Richard?
They want, they're going to want to go below the, where we excavated too. So, we excavated somewhere in, in excess of 13 feet vertically, so it'll be a sample, it'll probably go down between 14 and 20 feet, something like that, to get samples. So, so I know that y'all had approved that, and we wanted to get through Christmas time and everything, so they're scheduled to be here tomorrow, and hopefully, it'll be a, a quick in and out. And, and as soon as we have the results, we'll share them with you. Weather's been a little poor. We, we, we got not only street paving going, but it's been interrupted today, as well as they've started the drains work down at Church Street in Oak. And that's kind of got interrupted today too, so hopefully, we'll, we'll dry out and get those back moving forward. But that's it. Great, thank you.
Kim? Terry, anything else?
So, on the service replacement downtown, we're, this morning was about 115. It's become a lot slower in certain areas. We've actually found some piping that ended up being steel, it's supposed to have been cast iron, and it's just, every time we dig, we find something new. We found some spots today that was six feet, so we had to have shoring boxes. With the weather today, they was only, they did four today. So, just depending on what we find, but we are at 115, totally replaced with the yards fixed. And they've, they've been doing a great job. I've only had two complaints for yards, and it was very minor, type of grass on one and a skint bush on the other, so everybody's real pleased. That's it.
All right, excellent. Counsel, any questions? Jill, is that you back there?
Yes.
It's hard to recognize you with that mask on.
I know you guys received your budget a couple of weeks ago, and we do have meetings this week, but it's a new year, and I just want to say, I'm here to answer any budget questions you have. I know in the past, that may have, there may have been some pushback, even asking me budget questions, but that's no longer, and I'm here to help in any way I can, so just to let you know that.
The mayor has informed the council that you and Kim and she have done such a good job, we should probably have no questions at all. Chief Hollinan? Okay. Hunter?
Thank you, Counsel. I don't have anything for our department, but just wanted to clear a little bit of misinformation that was put out there. The Baldwin County, in Baldwin County, you're not talking about this already, in your mayor's report, okay. The Baldwin County has a new zoning district around the Lakewood area, it's Planning District 19. That is a Baldwin County effort, so that has nothing to do with the City of Fairhope, and I think it was reported, that's a new district in, within Fairhope. So, just wanted to paint that picture, that, that was voted in, on December 29th. Majority of the people within that district voted to approve that, has been approved by the probate court. And now they will start a process working with those property owners within the district to give zoning designations per the Baldwin County zoning code. So, within that area, there is 180-day moratorium on development, for permits within the county and review of the county, new applications. And that, they hope to, within that 180 days, work through that process. This is very much like District 26, which is kind of coastal point clear and escaping now 16 or 17, which is Montrose area, that's just outside of our area, adjacent to the City of Fairhope, but does have county zoning.
So, would the moratorium affect anybody that's in there that's trying to ask to annex into the city and have a rezoning and...
Point of clarification, that will not affect single-family properties, and majority of that district is a single-family. That's a good question. If annexation, if they annex into the city and fall under our zoning, that should not impact them. So, if, if it is, you know, timing-wise, if that happens in a, within less than 180 days, that, that's certainly something we can look at. But that would, should have Fairhope zoning then, and would not apply to the moratorium. Any questions on that?
Questions.
We have to answer.
Hunter has put together a, a great kind of little information sheet that he ran through the county, and they gave him some, some pointers on it, so it's a great little one-pager, so I'll make sure that we share that.
Yes.
With y'all, so you can have it.
And so, they actually had an election back?
On December 29th.
Yes, sir. That is...
Am I the only one that didn't know there was an election on December 29th?
You're not the only one.
No. There was, somewhere around 700 votes, so 700 people knew about it.
That's, that's a pretty good turnout, considering.
Yes, I believe there was three proposed districts this time, so it's, first, first time in the county in 10, 10-ish years, there was a new district. So, that, that's the only one close to us. Most of the other two were on the other side of the county. Yes, Mayor Sullivan asked me to put that together, so we're, we've got it ready now, so we'll get that out to, to you and anyone else that needs it, just to try to clarify, clarify.
Thank you. Michael?
Just have one thing real quick. After the holidays, our contractors are back in town, so they're going to start working on the second big transformer at Twin Beach Substation. We're going to do that switching tomorrow, and they'll get that other transformer out, put the new one in, and get all the bus work and everything redone. So, that'll be, the new transformer that we do have now, that we're putting all the load on, is actually has more capacity than our peak, so much more comfortable now than I was when we had that over on the other two transformers.
Questions?
Thanks.
One of these days, I want to find five minutes, I want to go down there and check that site out.
Yeah, it's, it's a new site, and it's actually starting to look like a substation.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Jason?
I don't really have anything, other than sickness has hit our department like most of the other departments. But our crews have done a great job, I think, trying to stay ahead of the curve with the growth we've had and all the main breaks and all that goes along with it. But if you all have anything for me?
Questions for Jason? Thank you, sir. Eric?
Just a couple of updates. One, the online permitting portal is up and running, and I came in on Monday and I had 88 unassigned queries in my, in my inbox, so I have been steadily working through those. One thing that did come up, and, and it made it on social media, and we had some calls about it. There is a cell tower that is being built right north of the rear property lines of, it's not Hollow Brook, is it Hollow Brook? Hollow Brook subdivision. It's a monopole. It's a 190-foot monopole, and it is on unzoned property within the county, but it is the next lot over from the backyards of the folks right there at the Hollow Brook entrance. When that came to us in, I think it was October, we knew it was going to be a hot topic, so, you know, we crossed every T and dotted every I that we had. We required them to give us a copy of their FCC tower certification and license showing it could be there. We had them give us a no-hazard-to-navigation letter from the FAA. We have written verification from Baldwin County Planning and Zoning that they have no jurisdiction over it. They gave us their engineering to verify 160 mile-an-hour wind load, and we asked them to also send it out for a second opinion, and we got that. So, it was one of those issues where it is on unzoned property, and there are no land use restrictions as to what they may or may not do on that property. So, we issued the permit, and they evidently began erecting the pole last week, and we've been receiving a lot of phone calls. The mayor has, and I'm sure others have as well. So, just to let you know, and you can't miss it when you're driving, it's right there, right around Sweat Tires, just north of the Hollow Brook entrance. You cannot miss it. It's an AT&amp;T pole. So, if you, if you get any calls, or you have anyone ask you about it, once again, it is unzoned property in the county. And there's just, there, there was nothing anybody could do to prevent it from being there. On the good side, on the flip side though, we're hoping 190-foot tower will improve cell reception, which is another common complaint. So, we'll, we'll, hopefully, that will at least be a little bit of a silver lining with it.
Don't count on it. Well, I, you know, it's, it just, it just goes to show, I mentioned this on radio this morning, that, that zoning is not always your enemy. Zoning can be a good thing, and people need to keep in mind that when we, I don't, I don't know, I believe it was Hunter one time said, he doesn't know of any property was ever devalued by, by zoning. And, but it certainly has improved values of a lot of people's property. So, you know, those that would be against any zoning, there's, there's many, many instances in this town recently that we can think of, and that, that being one of them. Another retail outlet that was built near the high school recently is another that I've received a lot of complaints about, that we can't do anything about. So, just keep that in mind, people. And Counsel, I will, for the record, again, remind you that we are going to be facing numerous small cell tower applications in, in the coming years with 5G technology, and people are going to demand that. But those are required about every 500 feet radially. And if you want to know what that could look like, go to Hunter's office. Hunter, you need to bring that picture in here of downtown Fairhope, taken right over on Section Street, where there's all the power lines and poles and everything. And it can be very aesthetically disturbing if we don't, if we don't pay attention to this and, and get a handle on it. Because there are pockets all over town where carriers are going to try to put small cells, large cells, you name it. And all the decades of beautifying this city could go to the wayside if, if we don't, if we don't watch it.
Yeah, and, and just for clarification for everybody, we have a small cell ordinance at the council, and, and previous administration worked on. But that only applies on city right-of-way, does not apply on anything that's in the county. So, the other thing that, that folks don't understand, and Hunter and I deal with it all the time, is the hopscotch nature of what's in the city and what's out. Because of annexations being done only at the request of that individual parcel owner. So, there's, you know, the, the Dollar General at 44 and Twin Beach is a perfect example. That area was out, all other three corners are in. So, people have an opportunity, if you want to go to the website, we have a map that shows what's in the city and what's not. And there's a lot of things that folks don't understand about what's in the city. The one, the example I always use is in front of the, I believe it's a Spring Lake subdivision on Greeno. There's three offices there, including a, a couple of business offices and a doctor's office. Well, Spring Lake and things on both sides are in, but those parcels are out. Those businesses are not in the city limits. So, it, you know, to really understand what you're dealing with, you kind of need to look at that map, because you really don't know, unless you're in the, in the heart of town. You really don't know if you're next to unzoned parcel or not, so you don't know what, what you may get.
Well, when the Barnwell Landmark Historic District passed, I really wish they would have had a map of that on the ballot, instead of a, you know, a 10 pages of verbiage as to the legal description of that. And I think people don't understand necessarily what that was. And while I don't think the city wants to flex our muscle, you know, well beyond our city limits, I thought it would have been really good to square up our city limits at the time, which we would have been able to square them up, and, and we wouldn't have these pockets, and we wouldn't have these surprises.
Well, and there's some people that have the misconception that the Barnwell District provides some kind of land use protection, and it does not. All it does is prevent annexation. There is still unzoned, and I, I use the example, and it's actually happened. I tell folks in the county, I've had folks call and say, if someone wants to put a pig farm next to you, they can do it on unzoned property, and that has actually now happened on South 98, right next to somebody's residence. So, you know, that's the example of, of what can happen.
Yes, sir, Hunter. We got his attention back there.
Yeah, take two here. Two updates on that. The small cell, just, just since you brought that up, a quick update. The one, you came to a planning commission, we helped, we appreciate your support on that one. That particular location is being relocated into the parking lot to co-locate with the light pole. They're going to replicate that light pole, but put a small cell on it. So, our process did work there. Lots of thanks for helping us get through that, because I think that sets a standard as we move forward. And then just wanted to mention, for all those folks in Hollow Brook and on the edges of our city, if you've got family and, you know, the, the process for zoning, whether that's an annexation in the city or county zoning, is, is, Lakewood just went through that. It's a relatively easy process, so if there's any information we can do to help people answer questions on that process, get them in touch with the right people, we'll be happy to do that.
Would it be a, a time now, Mayor, to maybe put some of that information out on our new, our new app? And, and that people could go look at that, and we could give some, I think it'd be helpful to have some real-world examples.
Yes, and that's one reason why I asked Hunter to put together the one-page information on the Planning District, just to, on the, the Baldwin County Planning District 19, just to be able to start that conversation. And I have talked to several people in the Hollow Brook HOA, because I do think it needs to be citizen-driven. So, but if we can go out there with our planning staff, with the county planning staff, and explain to them how they can go through the process of creating zoning in their area, that's, we want to be able to help facilitate that if we can.
Is Hollow Brook in the county or...
It's in the city.
Hollow Brook's in the city.
They are in the city.
And that's with the, the retail store you talked about, you know, that, that's the challenge. You feel bad for our residents that do have zoning, but they're neighbors, so it... You feel bad for our residents that do have zoning, but their neighbors, so it, it's about friends and family who you know that, that does live in that zone, educating them on the challenges and, and what's going to be coming next to them, you know, what the next issue is.
And it's, it's hard because, I mean, I understand, I would not want to sit out on my back porch and look over my privacy fence and see 190-foot monopole. I mean, and they probably didn't realize that that was unzoned county property, but unfortunately it was. And, you know, and I talked to Eric at length about it, I mean, we could have notified people all day long, although we don't have to. I mean, we probably could have, but we don't have to by law. But the fact of the matter is, at the end of the day, we could have notified them, it wouldn't have mattered, not unless the property owner would have agreed to, to not build it.
The problem we have is this, the property owner believes that their property is more valuable the more they can do with it.
Yeah, and which is?
Which may be true.
Most studies, you might be able to sell it quicker, but more valuable, most studies will tell you the opposite.
Yeah, because they're getting a ground lease on that tower now, if they didn't sell it. They either sold it for a high dollar or they're getting the ground lease on that and a monthly lease on that.
But you think about the properties adjacent to that, the value went down because that's, you know, anyway looking to invest in property is going to be concerned what's going to be next to them in the future. And there is, studies will show, there's a dollar amount attached to that that's usually higher than unzoned and the risk that comes with that. So that is something to consider in the, on those. But zoning for, for this tower, for instance, the, what zoning, a lot of people just think about telling people what to do on private property. Our zoning code addresses cell towers, would not allow one to be put in an area where it can fall on a house. So the distance there, that's some of the things you can handle in zoning code that is not addressed here. It can loom right over the whole neighborhood.
But when we have, it has to be zoned for, to allow structures of a certain height too, doesn't it?
Right. So, yeah, lots of layers to that. Sorry.
Always something.
We're on a topic I like, so I figured we'd get another shot at it.
Pat?
First of all, our outdoor basketball court is currently underway at the Boys and Girls Rotary Youth Club. We're having some difficulties with the weather, obviously, but we'll be able to turn it over for a notice to proceed to American Tennis Courts on the 19th, so we're on target with that. We're excited about that. I wanted to congratulate our tennis pro, Tomas Qatar. He was named the Alabama Tennis Professional of the Year by the Professional Tennis Registry. They will be putting out a press release on February the 9th. We will be doing some demolition of the press box towers at Founder's Softball this week. For anybody that's familiar with those big ugly brown things stuck up in the air, we'll be taking those down and getting all that cleaned up. Also, I know that you guys are already aware, we had some positive cases come to our attention at Quail Creek this weekend, so we are, you know, taking some measures to try to limit some of the traffic inside, but we obviously want to continue operations as normal as possible. So we would be doing the sanitation, fogging in there and trying to keep it as clean as environment as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, review of city council agenda. Want to try to go through this as much as we can so that we can whip through the meeting at 6:00. I think there's like a baseball game, basketball or badminton or something going on tonight, I forget what it is, but something going on tonight that some of you may be interested in. All right. Because number five is a public hearing, I believe, Hunter, we should wait until the agenda to go through that and that'll just be, I'll ask for somebody to introduce it and I don't think we'll take action on that, but we'll wait on that. Regular city council meetings, you should have already given your inputs to the schedule for item number six. Item seven is appointment of the municipal judge. I haven't talked to any of you about it, but nobody asked to remove that from the agenda. You did, Clark?
I did a straw poll, they're all in favor.
Okay, all right. Didn't want to unduly influence anybody there, so, okay, good enough. Item number eight is an extension, to execute extension number two with Auburn University for the Personnel System Project, and this is only due to the fact that the Phase One has not been completed, this does not cost us any more money, it's just an extension of the performance period to May 31st. Number nine, however, is related to Phase Two of that study. Mayor, do you want to speak to that now?
I can answer.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's go ahead and cover that now.
So I will, I am going to tell you in our comments that we did get the first part of the first contract. We received the job descriptions back today for review by, for review by the staff and then we'll return those to Auburn to make any corrections. On the second one, the second contract that we have with Auburn is for a new updated handbook, employee handbook, and because we have not received the deliverables on the first contract, which has taken now almost two years, we're going to go, they, they've had a change in leadership, they said they did not think they would meet their deliverable date on that contract, so we're going to go ahead and cancel that and if we want to revisit it in the new budget year, we can, but that was a $75,000 contract, so we're going to go ahead and remove that and revisit it in the new year if we need to, but I think I have some other options for that.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 10 was a resolution that the council approves and authorizes the mayor to execute an amendment to the intergovernmental services agreement between Baldwin County Commission and the City of Fairhope related to, this would be related to the transit hub at the parking garage. This is an additional 5307 funds and an additional local match. Mayor, you want to brief us on that as well, or Richard? This, this is something that's actually been in the works for quite a long time, we're just behind on this.
Yeah, just, and this is kind of like our, our version of our own soap opera. As you recall, councilman, council president, since you're on the MPO is that, you know, we went, we kicked this project off, we went through stakeholders, we came back to the MPO, we got additional funding and then we spent all of calendar year 2020 in FTA hell. There's no other way to describe it. And, and we are now to the point where it looks like that they have gotten through the project eligibility funding, we've gotten the NEPA, so we, we actually are starting to believe there's a hope and a dream, this project's actually going to start moving forward. So these are housekeeping items. One, this is basically updating the ISA, you know, with, with the change of mayors and, and now that Taylor has retired from Brats and we have different folks that just is correcting that, so, so we've already executed this agreement once, this is just amending and updating that. And as an accompanying thing, item is item number 11, which is amending the professional service agreement, which includes the additional funds and the required match that the MPO did approve in a year past. So this is what that is. I, I believe we've got everything accounted for in the budget and things of that nature. This is just making sure all the paperwork is current and up to date if we get the, the green flag from FTA to get moving on this. So we're, we're poised and ready and we have word that they have addressed the funding eligibility and we're just waiting for the details of that, so.
I have a question, Richard.
Yes, sir.
The item 11, if we go to item 11, there is an amount of $98,675. If I go to the resolution, it says we've agreed to contribute in addition to 106,750 for the 20% local match and then the, then the very next, whereas, it talks about an increase in the architecture contract of $98,675. I'm a little confused as to what we're doing here. What's the total? Is it 106,750, 98,675 or, or the sum of the two?
Well, the amend, amendment and, and I've got my favorite accountant over here, the, the amend, we have to amend the professional service agreement to capture the increased A&E cost for, for the project, so that, that is 98,675. Is that correct, Kim?
That's the total amount. So increase wasn't 98,000, no, that's going to be the total contract.
Yeah, it's going to go up to that amount, yes. But where did the 106 come from?
That's our 20% match.
Okay, okay.
That's the 20%.
Oh, okay, is the 106, so let me get this straight, so 106,750 is 20% of the total?
Additional funds.
Additional funds.
I'm still, okay.
533 additional, our 20% is 106 and at the same time, we got to bump the architecture up to 98,675.
Yeah, two things. Okay, we got an additional increase from the MPO of 533,750, so our 20% match is that 106. But in addition, included in that fees is the A&E fees, but we have to update the contract to demonstrate that we're, the A&E fees are going up to 98,675. So at the end of the day, we've got to match every expense by 20%, MPO is paying 80%. The additional increase in the match is 106. Did I say it right, Kim?
Okay.
Yeah, I've got my cheat sheet here too.
So, so we did get an additional 533,750?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Let's make absolute sure, there's three numbers in that resolution.
So those are what those two items are accomplishing, updating the agreements, amending the contract for A&E and also making sure that we've covered by resolution all the funding of this project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the total was initial, it was initially 480. We're getting an additional 533,750. Okay. The 106,750 is the additional 20%, which brought the architecture's fees to 98.
Yes.
Yes.
Easy. I can't believe you asked that question, Jimmy.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Okay, item 12 is a resolution authorizing the mayor execute a contract with Volker to perform professional engineering and C&E services for the installation of the UV Cygna Disinfecting System at the wastewater treatment plant with an amount not to exceed 65,000. Jason, are you available to talk to that if we have questions about that?
Yes, we have a registered Volker.
Oh, oh, hey, how you doing? I don't, I don't recognize anybody with their mask on. Does anybody have any questions for Volker now on that item? Okay. Item 13 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to approve the negotiated fee for the masonry and concrete work for the alterations to the municipal stadium. This is related to the ADA compliance and authorizes the mayor to execute the contract with Calbaugh, Cal, how do you pronounce it?
Calbo.
Calbo.
Calbo Construction, thank you, for a not to exceed amount of 138,504. Who would speak to that? Richard, would you speak to that? You want to give us a quick rundown on that? We got a few minutes.
Yeah, and not to, the, the only thing that was kind of, this, this is the complete construction of all of the, the structural elements of the improvements, including the thing, excluding the handrail system because that was, that became difficult. We do have a standalone quote, but we're also looking at fabricating that in-house just in having the material cost. But that is the project for the grandstand side that includes not only the ramps and the ADA galleries, but also a brick facade on, that matches what's already on the field house and concessions.
What would that look like? What would those handicap, what would these look like?
I actually have that graphic in my office, I'm going to run grab it, so we'll have it for the meeting. It's a, it's a large, it's a large graphic, but it, it looks great. It does, it looks really good.
Now, you and I have had many discussions about that. You happy with it, mayor?
I am happy with it. We went out there and met with Pat and Richard and talked to them about some of the ideas that I had that I thought might work, but, yeah, this is going to look really good. I'll be excited when we can actually do the visitor side too and make it look, look the same. It's going to look really a great improvement for our stadium, not only the ADA accessibility, but just the aesthetics of it.
I will tell you something else, it sounds like a good price.
Yeah, it's a great price.
We might be working with these people again.
Yeah, and they do good work.
I may not be able to pronounce her name, but that's a good price.
He's been around for a long time.
When I had five people correct me on it, I figured he must have been, so apologize to.
Robert, yeah, Robert would have corrected.
You approved contract for him before.
Yeah.
I'm sure. I probably mispronounced it then too. All right.
The next one's mine too, so.
All right, go ahead.
This, this.
Item 14, council.
As you know, we are dealing with a little ADA complacency issue and, and part of that requirement is getting, getting our ADA transition plan up to date and, and reapproved through the Department of Transportation and this is a request to, and we are five years removed from the last, the last time we, we produced this plan, so it is a normal scheduled thing, but we're asking for an allocation of 6,600 for EDT to come back in and, and resolve the issues that we have with that, that plan and hopefully we will have that up and back to you for approval by spring so that we have gotten that checkbox from the, the federal highway folks taken care of, so.
Okay. 15 years as well?
Pardon?
It's 15, item 15 years as well?
Okay. Me and Jason, we're kind of partners on that, so he, he's more knowledgeable than I am, but I'm a big supporter of.
He's shaking his head, no, he said, you keep talking.
I did want to mention one thing about that, Richard. This is only the pump. This does not include the artist work on this fountain, so she had some personal issues, asked us to put her portion off for a couple months, so we're putting that off, but I did want to go ahead and get the pump repaired.
And I do notice it's going to be a salt pump system.
It is, yes.
We have to put a big sign on there, salt pump system.
Yes.
No chlorine.
That is all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 16, authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract with Jade Consulting for topographic survey services at Valana Park for the rec department with a not to exceed amount of 33,925. Pat, you wanted to speak to us on that?
Yeah, so the, the amount was a little bit higher than what we had anticipated, but the initial proposal that we sent out did not encompass a lot, or majority of the area on the west side of Valana, did not include the youth baseball fields or the dog park. So in talking with the mayor, we felt like it was important to go ahead and get the entire property done, that way if we did want to do some reconfiguration on the youth side, that we would already have that survey in, in hand.
I don't disagree with that logic either.
I think it was the rec board's recommendation too, to go ahead and do the whole, the complete piece of property.
Okay. Check real quick, you got that in the budget. Council, any questions for Pat on that? Okay. All right, item 17 is a water replaster to pool at Rec Center to Riviera Pools, I can cover that. That's a reduction of about $20,000 from where we were at the last time this was on the, on the agenda, so thanks for your patience in that and staff are working to save the city some money on that project. Executive session and public participation and that's it. We will, any, any comments, council? Any comments, mayor? Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn and let's try to get started promptly at 6 o'clock and get everybody in here just a few minutes before 6:00, we'll get started on time today.